Can anybody else hear anything, or is it just me?
I could hear you ask that question. Does that count?
I can't hear the, I can't hear them at the.
How's that? Mark, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Better?
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and jump into just a very brief presentation of the budget. And I think it will just give you a good frame of reference as we go through. So those are obviously our Board of Education members. And we want to thank them for their service and their time, especially during budget season. Just a reminder that our mission and vision that Torrington Public Schools will ensure every student is able to graduate with the skills and attributes that empower them to enter the college or career pathway of their choosing. Through engaging instruction that is relevant, rigorous, and personalized to student needs. Torrington Public Schools will successfully prepare all students to be productive citizens and critical thinkers capable of adapting and thriving in a dynamic and global, dynamic global environment. But also hopefully thrive in the city of Torrington. We'd love our graduates to come back. You've heard me say that many, many times. So as we go through the budget process, we take it very seriously. We start in November. In fact, it feels like it never ends. We get input from site leadership and administration. They go through discussions where there are department chairs and their teaching coordinators. And they pull all of those folks together. And then we meet with principals at central office. We have monthly budget meetings with the Board of Ed. We gather input from sites, central office, and board. We pull all of those things together. We look at enrollment, master schedule needs, student needs, staffing, course studies, increased graduation requirements that are set by the state, which are now set at 25 credits. We were at a 22 credit limit. And then obviously, everything that we've done over these last three years have been colored by COVID-19. So if we can go to the next slide, Ellie. So this just gives you an overview. If we can move some of those, can we move the people? Can we minimize the people? It might be easier to see these figures. But you're gonna see these figures presented in a variety of different ways. And this just gives you the breakdown. I know some people like to see the numbers instead. So you're seeing a comparison of the 2020, the proposed budget, as well as this fiscal budget that we are in right now. And the different amounts and percentages, and then percentage change. Really looking at that over 70% in terms of salaries and benefits. And when you go to the next slide, you really see that in a very visual way. That most of the budget, not surprisingly, is that salaries and the benefits and the rest falls out into the various categories, purchased professional services, other purchase services, dues and fees, and such. We go to the next slide. You really see how our contractual obligations, these are things that we don't have an option. We don't have any flexibility in terms of the changing. You're looking at salaries and benefits. You're looking at tuitions, particularly for sped, but also for our Boag and our magnet schools. The transportation, so our busing, our energy costs. And those are things that we are obligated to provide to our students. And that's at 91% of the budget. So it's a significant portion. So when we look at in our next slide, the non-contractual necessities. These are certainly important, even though they may not be contractual. They are repairs and maintenance, professional services, when you're really looking at special ed services, as well as like legal and any professional education services. Our special education instructional services, just in terms of supplies are up. And then our replacement equipment, because we do wanna make sure that we stay on top of that as well. So we go into our next slide, just general budget district-wide. These are some of our drivers, continued intervention support. That has been very, very important, particularly when we are looking at any gaps due to COVIDs. You're looking at literacy, math, behavioral interventions, any infrastructure improvements, technology wiring, compliance with any of the technology pieces that have become so integral to our life and our service in terms of education and providing education each and every day. Professional services such as consulting, legal sped services that we offer. We've been very fortunate to expand our English language instruction services with our bilingual teachers, our EL, our English language learner teachers, and our bilingual paras. Repairs and maintenance, because we do wanna keep our buildings in good repair. The replacement equipment, which is yet again a part of this. And then our key supports and programs, such as the extras that we have, which are targeted instruction, extra supports, our academic resource center at the secondary level, behavioral supports, and then family outreach, which I'll go into in just a little bit. So we look at what this looks like in terms of general budget staff additions. You can see the breakdown of the various categories. The first two positions really being related to the 25 credits and really making sure that now that this next year will be our seniors who have to make sure that they graduate with the 25 credits. We are adding some teachers there, our English language learner teachers, and our paraprofessionals district-wide. We were fortunate that the city paid for these positions through ARPA funds this year. And now they're being moved to our general budget. We are seeing definitely a need for alternative ed teachers at the secondary. Students really needing smaller class settings. The next two positions you see because of an enrollment increase in first grade. And then interventionist at the secondary level, which falls into very much the same category of what I was speaking about before. Alternative ed, interventionist, extra supports. And you'll hear me talk about different additional supports that we need that are integrated into this general budget as well. Our library media specialist at Southwest, we have one already at Forbes. Really making sure that we're building our support in terms of library media, heavy on the media, obviously. But also, this has enabled us to develop a tag program at each one of those schools. Those are our four or five schools. So it's in order to offer enrichment as well. So you see a heavy custodial increase in this budget. When we looked at the state standards and the national standards, we are woefully behind. And so we are, want to make sure that we can keep our buildings up to par and well-maintained. And we can do the repairs. John Barlow's been a great leader in terms of making sure that his custodians are out there and fixing and repairing. So we'd like to make sure that we are keeping our buildings up to par. The paraprofessionals are particularly targeted for our primary levels. During the COVID time, we had students who did not receive pre-K classes, interventions, daycares, or programs. So we are really seeing students who are lagging in terms of some of just those social skills in particular, as well as really making sure that they have those important foundational pieces. Those positions would help with that instructional support. And then our technology specialists, I don't have to tell you how much technology has become such an important part of our lives. And then our resource officer at TMS, we are very, very fortunate in having Officer Dave Cooper at our high school. And we would love to replicate that position. Hopefully, Dave can be a mentor for whoever comes in in that position in the future, should we be able to fund that. And next slide. So we do have some savings. And a breakdown of retirement savings, resignation savings, just hiring folks at a lower rate. And we used our step-five second level for our targeted salary as we hire our newbies in. So sometimes that's a little up, sometimes that's a little down. But it gives us an average, a place to start from, which is very helpful. We found that we could also reduce our staff in terms of one ELA teacher at TMS, and then a fourth-grade teacher at Forbes. So that adds up to a savings of $872,842. So next slide, please. We also are very, very fortunate in that we have grant funding. We have those ESAR funds. We have ARPA funds. We have Title I. We are also an alliance district. And so we try to really be fiscally responsible with every dollar. But it funds so many wonderful things that we are able to offer for our students, academic intervention support, enhanced wellness. We have definitely seen an increase in need in terms of mental health supports for our students. The support staff, such as behavioral certified behaviorists, behavior interns, and registered behavior technologists. Alternate programs this year, we were able to provide alternate programming for seventh and eighth graders. We'd like to expand that, particularly at the high school. And just expand our offerings for students, because smaller settings have shown that they really help our students succeed. Those students who are not really having success in larger settings, regular classroom settings, do well in a smaller setting. So we'd like to build on that and building those programs. Our college and career pathways, we've been talking about for a number of years. We are continuing to build our course and our programs there. And very, very excited about that, particularly as we are getting ready to build our new middle school and high school. Curriculum development enhancement has been happening over really the last two years, but intensively over this last year as we've moved out of hopefully COVID and into the endemic, not the pandemic. So that's going strong. Instructional supplies are always needed. Professional learning opportunities for all staff as we're learning how to do, really provide a different instructional opportunities and ways of teaching. And we now have one-to-one devices. That makes a huge difference. And our school's security personnel, we are adding the, we've always had security pairs at the high school, and we're adding them to the middle school. And just some recent accomplishments. The Leap Home Visiting Program has been acknowledged not only statewide, but nationally. We have, I have to give kudos to Sue Ferguson, Donna Labby, and all of our staff. We have 65 staff who are participating in this program. It's really an outreach in homes and been able to bring our families back. They have been able to reach 400 families this year. It's been amazing. The curriculum work, as I mentioned, targeted instruction, so important. The teen center relaunch has been phenomenal for our secondary students in particular. And that's been a registration site, as has Kids Play. And that targets our early learners and has been wonderful, because it's right downtown. It's easy access. It's great for our families and great for our students. And just the accelerated learning focus, so that we can provide really offerings for our students who are struggling, as well as provide challenges for students who are ready for that as well. So we'd love to just talk about recent college acceptances. I'm sure you saw in the news that we had a student accepted to Harvard. We're very, very excited about Logan Wilson being able to go off to Harvard in the fall. And you can see just really so many distinguished schools that we have our students participating in and have gotten acceptances too. So very, very exciting about where our students are going in the future. So who are we? Just a reminder in terms of our demographics, because they are always changing. We can go to the next slide, Ellie, because it actually gives us some numbers. And I think you can see visually how our, our school community is changing. So our white population at 50.5, Hispanic Latino growing at 36.2, Black or African-American 5.8, Asian 4.5, multiracial 2.8, and Native American at 2%. And district-wide free and reduced lunch and eligibility. We are actually all free, free lunch throughout our whole entire district, which has served us very well during COVID, because everybody has been able to receive free meals, breakfast, and lunch. And that's been wonderful, especially as we have had some newly impoverished families as well during this time. So you really see that flip-flop, and you can see that free eligibility and reduce really growing over the last 10 years. The other population that is growing are English learners, and you can go ahead, Ellie, to 11.9%, almost that 12%. And you can see where the breakdown occurs at all the various schools. Torrington and the middle school, the high school, really being significant there with Vogel-Watmore not far behind. And those are students who are really coming in to us as newbies, as well as students who are really working on their language acquisition and have been here for one or two years, or for a long time and still need support. Special ed is the next slide. And Laura and her team have done a phenomenal job in terms of really working on giving students exactly what they need, not over-identifying. And now really, if you look at that percentage at the very bottom, 14.9% of our student population, the state's average is 15.9. We're actually under the state average now, which is really, really phenomenal. This used to be a major driver of the budget. It still is, obviously. But really, now we're able to invest those funds rather than having that be a driver and putting so much money into special education. It does help to also have all those interventions as well. Before, we're just qualifying students for special ed in order to help students build up their skills. So next slide really shows you the magnet school, student tuition, this is school choice. And you can see where students are choosing to stay with us. This is a nice dip there, pretty significant. You look at the total from 2020, 2021 was at 126, and now 2122 is at 86. And then our special ed is from 31 to 20, and our regular ed 95 to 66. So those are the kind of trends that we wanna see, but I think that we are offering a lot more than we ever have. So our students are choosing to stay in Torrington Public Schools, which is a great trend. Magnet school tuition based on cost for all students. When you look at these numbers, you may say, okay, so why isn't there a huge savings? You have to remember that this also includes special ed. And so the costs, number one, of tuition go up every single year. And number two, the special ed services, and I know I say this every year, and I'm sorry for those who have had to hear this before, but it just bears remembering that we have to pay what the service cost is for that particular magnet. So in any of the slides that you'll see, for Boag, for Magnet, they set that rate. So for speech, for occupational therapy, physical therapy, paraprofessionals, they set that rate. And then we have to pay that based on what the student needs. So we don't choose that. And so that's why those numbers are still high. Next slide, Ellie. And so then Magnet School Special Education Services, so you see some increases there in terms of the budget, just to be safe, because we don't know what those services will be. We wanna make sure that we have those costs covered. And then we will look at what the actual is there, and we will keep monitoring those trends. Next few slides are on our Boag schools. And once again, you can see that there is somewhat of a dip, not as significant as the Magnet schools. You can see that there is a dip there. The total was 119, now going to 114. Special ed staying the same at 12 in each of those years, and then regular ed 107 to 102. So when you look at the Boag tuition base cost for all students, you can see that you, we have somewhat, the budget is going to stay the same. We have some dip right now in the actual, but that does not show you where we will be by the end of the year. We only have the actual up to this point in time, because we don't know what it's gonna cost us for May and June. That could change. So we're giving you what we have, what we've budgeted, and how close we are at this point. The Boag Special Education Services, for the actual, we are up a little bit. So once again, that's our special education cost and what the services are and what we need to provide. Special education outplacement trends. We can go ahead, Ellie. Especially, and go to the specially education outplacement. Oops, next one more. You're all good. There you go. And so what's nice here is we can see a dip, a slight dip, but still. So the budget is starting to go down as we have more and more services that we can supply and provide for our students. And hopefully, this will go down even more. That's the goal. I know that Laura's been working with her team to provide exemplary programs that parents really wanna have their students participate in. Particularly at the transition levels at 18 to 21, which is actually now 22-year-old. We service up to 22-year-olds. And then school enrollment projections, just to give you an overview. And this is with those two positions in those first grades, so that you can see that at the first grade, at kindergarten, we are at that 20-student-per-class size on average. And then the breakdown really building up to that fifth grade where you have a 22.5. And then the school enrollment projections for secondary. We are also seeing a reduction in students going to Oliver Wilkup, which is really wonderful. We used to have over 100 students going. Right now, we're projecting in 50, 55 students going. So we hope we get to retain our students. We're very, very excited. We think this is the place to be. And then our budget summary, just to give you those numbers. And the percentage increase is the 5.49. And then you see 4,226,891 is the dollar difference. And then just the back is the budget timeline, just so that you can see all the meetings and all the thought and all the time that was put into this budget that we're presenting to you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this point, I would open the floor up for questions from Board of Finance members, or additional comments from Board of Education members.
Mary, do you have a question? Page six, and I don't know Fiona or Sue is gonna take these questions. Page six of the first budget breakdown, the level two, 5890 is miscellaneous expenses north of $2.2 million. Can we? I tried to find the breakdown further, but in the 58 pages, I couldn't seem to find that line item.
So we had to track our COVID expenses separately.
Okay.
So there really wasn't a place in New World, so it fell under miscellaneous expenses. So that when the reporting was done, it would be easy, better easy to track that information.
Oh, so those are, those are COVID expenses that are gonna be reimbursed by grants? Or that's?
FEMA, we're not exactly sure.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
FEMA, possibly. We're not exactly sure.
Okay. But this is the, so it was also included in the presentation in the beginning of the presentation. Sorry. Yeah, cuz it shows as an increase in the 2022, 2023 budget is what I'm referring to, not the current budget.
The 235?
It's line item 5890 in the 2023 budget worksheet.
Yeah, but are you looking at the difference of the 235? On the right-hand side, because we still do have COVID expenses.
Right. So the percentage increase is, yes, is 235,000%.
Right. And that's the estimate of what our COVID expenses will be for next year?
Oh, okay.
Because we still have things that we have to do.
Okay.
Relative to COVID.
Is there a breakdown of that in that further blown up? I think it's level three. That's, I know it's another level two.
We can send that over to you.
Yeah, like a level three or something. It's just a large line item that says miscellaneous for two, almost $2.3 million. So it's kind of, you know, like, okay, well, it's, you know, what's, it would be good to probably know too for all of us to know what's considered a COVID expense at this point. It'd be interesting to see that.
Yeah, we can do the drill down and give you the breakdown of that whole account of what's actually in that account.
Yeah, that would be great, cuz like I said, 2.3 million in COVID expenses is a lot of money, so probably would like to see that. Don't have any other questions?
Other questions?
I was gonna say, this is Lance, just to piggyback off of that. So are you saying that of the 4.2 million increase, two and a half of that is COVID?
No. No.
No, we got moved from donations to this.
Right, because you're looking at a 5.49% increase, which is 4.2 million. But it looks like 2.252 million of that is because of COVID. So if we backed out the, the COVID, which we understand. So we say that basically the rest, everything else comes to about a $2 million increase? Or a two and a half percent increase?
In donations last year, that's why.
Okay, so they can explain it, cuz they actually moved it from their last meeting.
Right, this was an increase that after our last board meeting, that was put into that line item. This includes the par, the paraprofession, the 33 paraprofessionals, the
The miss, are you saying that the miscellaneous line item includes the paraprofessionals and the request that we made?
Yes. Yeah, so what is actually on in the list are additional positions is included in that miscellaneous list?
So then where?
But, but I guess my question was, I'm looking at a variance of 4.226 for the proposed budget. And, and that variance includes 2.25 million from miscellaneous expenditures, which you're saying is basically the COVID. So if we put that COVID in a separate bucket, I get it, it's dollars, it's still dollars. But in essence, if we took the 4.2 million minus the 2.2 million, are you saying everything else? Are you saying everything else outside of that two point two million is only a two million dollar increase over last year's budget proposal?
No, no, so. After we had met the last time, just to back up, the additions that the Board of Education made. The business manager moved into this miscellaneous expenditure account. So we had added the paraprofessionals, the thirty-three paraprofessionals.
COVID's.
COVID custodial staff all into that amount.
The technology specialists, they were moved in.
So, so now if those were two point two million dollars in code related expenses, how does? How does the ESSER money play into those types of expenses?
So the custodial staff was paid under ESSER last year, but this year they're getting moved into our budget.
Okay.
So that's part of it, and we can provide you with the breakdown.
Yeah, I think it'd be. When they were contractors.
We can send you the sheet of what got moved.
Yeah, yeah, what got moved from, yeah, from ESSER, and is there, so ESSER was two years, three years?
So there's a couple of different ESSERS, right? So ESSER one, it gets confusing, right, and September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Yep.
Okay, ESSER two and September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and then ESSER three and September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
What's the total of that ESSER dollar?
So when you look under revenue, Chris.
Yep.
It's on, it's in that list that you have. So if you look on that first page.
Yep.
You will see ESSER one was basically CARES Act ESSER. Okay, so that's basically done, we, we've expended all those funds, I can tell you that right now. Okay, and then ESSER two is right underneath. And that was the two point nine. And then the CARES Act ESSER three, sometimes that's called ARPA as well. And that's the five point nine million. Okay.
So our revenues page on this.
So. So predominantly the ESSER two, that's a lot of people, that's a lot of staffing, right? So that's the interventionist that was for targeted instruction, accelerated learning. Behavioral supports, those mental health supports, those kind of things. ESSER three is more things than people. We have the middle school windows, the, and all of these have been approved by the state. The MacBooks for the secondary.
Yeah, what is ESSER called in revenue, because all I see, I see the ESSER two on the, it's about like the ninth or tenth down, showing a line item of one twenty-one for twenty-one, twenty-two, unless I'm missing.
Did you find your revenue?
Yeah, I'm in revenue.
So if you go down, it actually says CARES Act, and so it's alphabetized. So it's one, two, three, four, five. It's under CARES Act and then ESSER is right next to it, you know, it's confusing.
Oh, okay.
Okay, makes more sense, I know, it's like, where is it?
Yeah, I'm like, that doesn't make sense, okay.
Yeah, all good, no worries.
Okay.
So, and then you have the breakdown.
Okay, now I see it, thank you.
Okay, yeah, the, the feds call it all those things.
Yeah, all the acronyms and.
Yeah. So that should at least clarify those amounts for you.
I see a hand raised, Mr. Bushka, you have questions?
Yeah, the question I have is. All these expenditures are being funded by federal funds. When these federal funds go away. Are we still going to have these expenditures that the city will now be responsible for?
I think, I mean, I really think it depends on which ones you're looking at, so some of them are temporary. The English language learner supports, you know, we've been discussing that for years, the need as our population continues to grow. You know, we're looking at about twenty-five percent in a class being English language learner on top of the twenty-five percent special ed students. You know, our staff is struggling with the needs. So that is something that we were fortunate to be able to pay out of the city's ARPA money last year, but that's a need that's not going to go away. So that's moved into the general budget for this year. In fact, we're not even positive, what we have is enough support for the high number of students that are coming in. Now, each position that we looked at through our budget process. You know, we looked at, we're, what we're going to call return on investment. You know, what the position was put in for that was paid out of those grants, what the efficiency of the position was, if there was an impact. And if we felt the need to keep the position. Now, other things were materials and supplies that won't eventually get moved into general budget.
Right, so some of these things are, that's why we are putting them into general budget, because in the future we are going to need them. So we're trying to slowly integrate them into the general budget. Because we are worried about when we don't have these funds anymore. But we are looking, as Fiona said, at the data constantly, three times a year, looking at test data, looking at student success, grades, graduation rates. Discipline, attendance, behavioral data, so we will use all of that to help us make these decisions.
I have another question, the revenue doesn't include twenty twenty-three's projected revenue. Unless there's a typo, on, on the five-year historical grant award revenue, state federal private in our revenue section.
Right.
It includes a projected twenty-one, twenty-two, but no.
Correct, because we don't know what we're getting. Yeah, that's the problem. Okay, that's the hard part, and on some of these, to be honest with you, we don't even know till October. Title one obviously usually doesn't come in till then, Alliance, we received fairly late, like September.
Yeah, do you think before budget, final budget adoption, at the end of May, you'll have a clearer idea and like as kind of revenues updates come in that will? Kind of get updated on that, or is it just whenever the?
The state should have their budget by then, but the rest of it.
Yeah, because sessions should close then.
Right, that's the difficulty.
But if I can add, those are grants and your expenses related to those grants are outside of the operating budget. So for your general, for the Board of Finance's purposes, your general revenue. General fund revenues, we will know when the budget, the state budget is. For instance, I know that the Alliance District portion for this current fiscal year will be going up another million dollars. And then I do know, because I was invited to testify on it, there is a House bill. To answer that question a little bit earlier, I think Mr. Bushka asked about the cliff, when all this ESSER funding goes away. You know, how are we going to face that cliff, I know that there is a bill. I went out and met with Speaker Ritter and Senator Looney. And a group of municipal leaders two weeks ago to have the conversation about that ECS calculation. And how they can ramp up the expedited increase in those ECS fundings so that we're not facing that cliff. So I think between the methodology that the Board of Education is using to monitor where the benefits are with the expenses. Being with the funds being expended, coupled with ECS increases, that hopefully we can manage that. I don't know if that answers your question.
The other piece is with the entitlements like Title One, Title Two, those are pretty consistent with what we've received before. A little up, a little down, usually Title Ones up a little bit, sometimes Title Twos down, so that makes it easier.
Yeah. Okay.
Floor is still open to questions or comments, Board of Ed members also, if there are comments. Anything else from Board of Finance?
This is Lance, so looking again at the proposed budget, just looking where the, the percentages are climbing substantially. You know, obviously with, with COVID, the tutors and the substitutes have, have increased. But do you have some kind of a sunsetting process in the future? To try to get back to a pre-COVID number for some of those additions?
So like I said before, we're really going to look at the data that will help us decide what we're keeping, what we're cutting or reducing. As we move forward. Substitutes, you're going to always need, always have. Substitutes, really that's become a staffing issue more than anything, there are staffing shortages all over the state, all over the nation. So I can't see that sunsetting anytime soon, I think it's going to take a little bit of time. Couple of years to correct itself. But all other positions, we are looking at seriously, like I said, three times a year, pulling that information, we share it with the board. We provide them with updates on really our return of investment. Any type of initiative that you do, really you have to do it for two solid years to see whether you have made a difference or not, to truly be honest. But these funds that we have received really have enabled us to do that, so I think that's very helpful. So we're on that two year, we'll, next year will be in that second year, and then we'll be able to see. While still being fiscally responsible, of course.
I think, I think the other big component is, we're not just dealing with the regular education of our students at this point. And I don't believe that any of us could have really predicted the true impact that COVID was going to have on our students. Both from an academic standpoint, a social standpoint, the mental health issues we're seeing, the extreme behaviors. It's really a large reset. You know, and just kind of to give you guys an idea, I'm just going to go over a couple of the grades. But when we look at where our kids were when they left at the start of COVID. When they returned in the fall this year, our sixth graders were only thirty-eight percent proficient in reading. Seventh graders were forty-one percent, eighth graders were thirty-four percent. Same type of numbers looking at the high school and elementary. So it's not just that piece of doing our traditional instruction. You know, we're expecting our staff to do all the traditional instruction. Plus deal with all of these other really extreme issues that we're facing. And add to that, you know, the increase of all the new students we received. Issues that a lot of the students are having, which is not just Torrington, it's across the district, we're on a call every week, everyone is seeing these type of behaviors. But then looking at our second and third grader, some of these kids have never been in a formal school setting. So there's an extreme loss of maturity that comes with going to school and being in the traditional classroom. So behaviors that you may have been able to address in kindergarten are now presenting in second grade. So I think it's so much more complex than a regular school year. And if we don't address it, we're going to get back into that place of not having adequate supports for remedial instruction for students. Which then ends up forcing them to get identified as special ed to receive services when they're likely not actually special education students. So we want to avoid that and frontload that support with the paraprofessionals in the room. To assist the teachers, especially in those primary grades, with all of the additional supports that these students are requiring. It's impossible to think that one kindergarten teacher can do twenty-five kids that have all of these varying needs. Added to that, there's been almost no socialization for these kids in a regular setting, like a playground or those type of things. And that will come, but it's going to take longer than COVID was to kind of rebound from that for these kids.
Thank you. Any other questions? With regard to the operating budget? Or the revenue piece? All right, hearing none, we'll move into item two. This is a review and discussion regarding the proposed capital budget for Torrington Public Schools fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
We do have some positive news to share on the capital budget, thanks to Mr. Barlow and Abby for. They actually wrote a security grant, so we were able to secure the majority of the security items through the grant. So we can actually remove that from the capital budget.
So, yeah, so within your packet, you do have the updated and you can see the updated five-year proposed capital plan. Which really does help address all of those issues. And if you look four pages in, you see the new total for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So with the, the grants, the O S C G and our reimbursement and. Really gets us to that bottom line, which is the six hundred and fourteen thousand one hundred and sixty-seven on page four, so that's really. A wonderful. Boom to all of us, so if you look at that very next page on page five, you really can see. That the security grant will pay for all of these things that we really feel are essential. So the visitor management system, access control, security cameras, install lock doors at the various schools. And so this, this supports the district and really having that upkeep, at least for our security measures. And, and helps with what we need at this level, at this point. Obviously, we still have some capital projects that are important to focus in on, but it really offsets that cost. To have five hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars from the state. That's wonderful.
Questions on this capital plan?
So the turf field's staying in place, right? It's not going to, it's not, it's not being moved with the new.
No, turf field stays in place, absolutely, our beautiful turf field, we don't remove that.
I do have a question on the middle school roof.
We.
Yes, we did.
Middle school roof, this summer, it will be the following summer, we are still working on that, the mayor knows we've been with her monthly. And.
For three point eight million on my next page.
That's why we really are taking our time to make sure we have engineers looking at it and Mr. Barlow's working on it intently. We have a monthly update from Mr. Barlow at our facilities and technology meeting, whether we want it or not. And then we share with the mayor as well, those updates.
And I would just add that the town funding. Available for previous bonding, that one point two million dollars, that is specific to roofwork and the reappropriation of the seven hundred. Thousand dollars for the windows.
Okay.
So that's why you see that one point two for town funding.
Well, so it should be larger than one point two, right? Or no?
No, seven hundred thousand plus the.
Five hundred.
But.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then the windows will be done this summer, I know you were concerned about them.
Yeah, well, it was like last year and then the year before, and then we're like, oh, we, we've got funding now. Where are the window, I think I asked you in like January or December, like where, where are the windows in the roof? And, and the same Vogel Wetmore too, what was the, I know we asked about those, what was the? Vogel Wetmore roof you were working on too, right?
So we're still working on gathering information on that.
Okay.
We want to get the Torrington School roof all set, and then we're ready to move into that.
Funding is secured for both of those projects already.
At this point, let's see what we have for Torrington Middle School.
Okay.
Yep, and then we'll go from there, we promise to update.
Other questions with regard to the capital plan? And this capital plan, as it's presented, is consistent with, for those members who were a part of the discussion a few years ago. That we moved to a net budgeting for capital projects, because those school construction grant funds. Have such a significant lag time. That it is far easier for us to budget the taxpayers portion in the appropriate year. And wait for those reimbursements to come through. Some projects end up being put off for a significant period of time. And it's easier from one fiscal year to the next to move those. Incomplete or those capital projects that haven't been started into a capital reserve account. So I think this is really a far better way. So I think this is really a far better way for us to budget for capital projects.
If I have any more questions, I can email them over like I usually do. Okay, thank you.
All right. If there are no other questions on capitals, item three is a review of the general fund and grant fund revenue. I think we pretty much covered that, unless there are other questions or comments. All right, well then.
Before I close. I have a question, it's Lorene.
Hi Lorene, yes.
How has attendance been this year compared to, to, obviously, last year was abysmal, but how do you feel compared to pre-COVID times?
Yeah, Lorene, to be honest, it's still been very, very tough, because we were doing contact, contact tracing for half of this year, even though it seems like a distant memory, and we were very happy to leave that behind. We had quarantining that was required, and students were out of school if, if they were direct contact. So we have had difficulties with attendance. And then students got sick and they, some students because of mental health issues or just family circumstances had trouble kind of getting up and running and going and coming back into the structure of the routine of each day. So we have had attendance issues still, unfortunately. Just piggybacking on what Fiona was saying, the mental health issues that our students are seeing and dealing with in terms of families. Some of them are dealing with deaths or just illnesses in ways that they never have had to before. So a lot of things coming at our students. So we've tried to make sure that we have those supports in place, but it has definitely impacted attendance, whether through illness or just life circumstance.
And was there discussion of a ten year capital plan, looking at things that when, when Mr. Barlow got going?
Yeah, we did discuss it, and he will continue to work on that, but we're really not to that level yet. We want to have a facility study done, and I think it will be much easier to develop a ten year plan once we have that facility study.
Thank you.
I see a hand raised. Mr. Bushka, did you have a question?
Yeah, this may be premature question, but are you able to project how the current year actual may end up compared to the budget? I know you still have two months left in your fiscal year, but just curious.
Yeah, it's a little tough to do. We never know what our special ed costs are going to be. And so then that's the wild card that kind of throws the wrench in everything. But right now, we're, we're trending on budget. We do have some, we have a surplus at this point. So we are doing well, we're in the black. And that's always positive news when you're getting to April, almost May. And we'll just take it from there.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Concerns? Okay, then there being no questions with regard to the budget review, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this portion of the meeting so we can open the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bushka. Any, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, we are adjourned. I know, it is a joint meeting. All right, so I'm going to move right into opening the public hearing. For the record, this is the public hearing portion of the evening. The purpose of the public hearing is to solicit inputs with regard to the Board of Education budget. For the record, it is still April twenty six, twenty twenty two, it is now six fifty eight P M. And before I open the meeting or the hearing to public solicitation, is there a public notice that needs to be read into the record?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Finance of the City of Torrington will conduct a public hearing to solicit citizen input regarding the Torrington Public Schools' proposed budget for the fiscal period from July one, twenty twenty two, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. The public hearing will be held on Tuesday, April twenty six, twenty twenty two, immediately following a special joint meeting with the Board of Education, which starts at six P M. in the City Hall Auditorium at one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. All interested parties are invited to participate in person or by Zoom. Members of the public attending the public hearing may present their comments for up to three minutes each. Public may also submit their comments in writing to the City Clerk's Office before four P M. on Tuesday, April twenty six, twenty twenty two. Written comments that are sent electronically to city underscore clerk@torringtonct.org or by mail to the City Clerk's Office, one forty Main Street in Torrington, will be forwarded to the Board of Finance for their review and consideration. Instructions for participating by phone or online are available at torringtonct.org. Copies of the proposed budget are on file and available for review in the City Clerk's Office located at Torrington City Hall, one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Interested persons may also view the proposed budget online at torrington.org, dated at Torrington, Connecticut, this nineteenth day of April, twenty twenty two. Carol Anderson.
Thank you, Carol. With that said, I would open this hearing up to the public. I think I had one person who did sign up and wished to make comment. Carrie Cassidy? And if I could just ask you to also read into the record your address, please?
Sure. Carrie Cassidy, nine Branford Avenue. I've been a teacher in Torrington Public Schools for the past twenty two years. And in this time, I have seen many budget changes and many changes to my individual building. I am asking that you accept the budget as presented by the superintendent. Fiona, thank you for your last speech, I couldn't have said it better. Our teachers are struggling to meet the needs of our students. As adults, we have struggled through the pandemic, many adults are still struggling. Our students are still in the middle of their struggles. I have seen more mental health crisis issues in my classroom this year than if you combined all of the mental health issues I have seen in the previous twenty one years teaching here in the middle school. Our students need these supports. This budget being put forward will allow us to easily, or more easily, meet the needs of our students, which will be ongoing for a number of years. This is not something that can be easily fixed in the next six months or even the next year or two. It is going to take time to rebuild our students into the individuals that they need to be in order to be receptive to learning. I'd like you to look at this budget as an investment in Torrington Public Schools. Investing in our schools is actually an investment in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cassidy. Still open to the public. All right, because it is a public hearing, I'm going to have to call this three times so that everyone who might think they'd like to say something has an opportunity before I close the hearing. So for the second time, I will call, is there anyone from the public wishing to address the board regarding this budget? Calling it a third time, anyone from the public wishing to address the board regarding the budget? Seeing and hearing none, I will declare the public hearing closed. Declare this public hearing closed. Public hearing is closed. That's it for the evening. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.